...meeting 2019 of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. My name is Dee Oliver, and I serve as the chairman of the commission. Before we get started, I have asked Pastor Vickers to please lead us in prayer, and this will be followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Ripley. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our city and for our nation and for the freedoms that we enjoy living here on this momentous day in the history of our country. We just, we thank you, Lord, for your goodness to us. We pray for all of those who are mourning the loss of their loved ones, even these many years later. And, Lord, we just pray that you will bring unity and strength to our nation. Lord, that you will bring an end to the violence that we see not only around the world but even in our own, our own country. We just pray for your blessing and your protection. We pray for this commission who meets today to discuss the planning projects for our city and how our city is going to proceed forward, and we just pray that you give them wisdom and give them all the understanding that they need to do their jobs efficiently and effectively in the best interest of our town. We love you and we praise you, and we ask these things in the name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus. And amen, and amen, and amen.
Thank you.
You'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Vickers. I appreciate you taking the time and coming down and leading us in prayer today. And thank you, Commissioner Ripley. I've asked Commissioner Weiner to introduce the members of our commission today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the far end of my right is Kaye Wilson. She is our city attorney. Next is George Alcaraz. George is a contractor, and he represents the Beach District. Sitting next to me is Jack Wall. Jack is a civil engineer, and he represents Rose Hall District. My name is David Weiner. I'm in commercial sales, and I represent the Kempsville District. The empty seat next to me is Don Horsley. Don is a farmer, and he is at large. Next is Ron Ripley. Ron is in real estate management and development. He is at large. Next is Dee Oliver. Dee is our chairman of the Planning Commission, and she's in funeral, she's a funeral director, and she is at large. Next is Jan Rosinski. Jan is the vice chair of the Planning Commission, and she's in property management, and she represents the Centerville District. Next is Mike Inman. Mike is an attorney, and he is at large. Next is Dave Redman. Dave is in commercial real estate, and he represents the Bayside District. Then we have Whitney Graham. Whitney is in land development, and he represents the Lynn Haven District. And next is Steve Barnes. Steve is a farmer, and he represents the Princess Anne District. And then Bobby Tahan is our planning director. And Mr. Tahan, would you please introduce your staff?
Yes. Today, we have clerking of the meeting Carol Dozier and Pam Sandloop. And with the planning department staff, in addition, we have Carolyn Smith, our planning administrator, Bill Landfair, Waddell, Marshall Coleman, Jonathan Sanders, Kevin Kemp, our zoning administrator, and Tori Rice with the city attorney's office. In addition, we have Carolyn Petullo with housing here as well for any future questions.
Great. Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Weiner. The first order of our business is the explanation of our rules on how we run our meetings, and our city clerk will read those for us now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. The commission requests that if you have a cellphone, please either silence it or turn it off. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission agenda. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be heard first. The consent agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. And then the regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the next order of business is to address those items to be deferred or withdrawn. Do we have any items that need to be withdrawn? Okay. Do we have an item to be deferred? The chair is aware of one item, which is item number seven.
Madam Chair, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing the Judeo-Christian Outreach Center. We are requesting this application be deferred for the reasons that you all heard and discussed in the informal briefing this morning, and we anticipate being back next month, and appreciate the matter being deferred. We did everything in our power to let everyone know, both on our side as well as the folks that we've been in contact with and staff been in contact with that had contrary feelings about our application. So we did everything we could do to make sure everyone was aware, and we don't have anyone here on our side. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know there are a couple people that would like to come up and speak on this deferred item. So the commission is here to listen to what you have to say at this time. And does the clerk have a name?
Do you have any speakers for?
Yes, we have two speakers for item number seven. Barbara Clark and Tom Musamechi.
Great. And just one at a time would be great. And know that, be mindful, you have three minutes, and welcome.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tom Musamechi. My property is at 10008 Coastaway Drive, which is in the Seabridge Square neighborhood, which is directly next to the Judeo-Christian Outreach Center. I will be very brief. I'm not going to oppose the deferral. I just want to make the commission aware that over the last year, city staff has met with the stakeholders in the Seventeenth Street corridor many times. Staff included Deputy City Manager Ron Williams, former planning director Barry Frankenfield, Kathy Warren from the Strategic Growth Office, Carolyn Smith from the Planning Department, and Kevin Kemp for zoning. During that time, the stakeholders provided significant information to city staff regarding the issues surrounding the soup kitchen that this applicant runs. In addition, I have sent Bill Landfair significant information showing the impacts of the soup kitchen on our neighborhood, and we were just very, very disappointed that none of our issues were addressed in the staff report. So I'm just simply requesting that the Planning Commission direct staff to go back and reevaluate specifically the soup kitchen portion of this application. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Oliver and Planning Commission members. My name is Barbara Clark, and I live on Sixteenth Street at the oceanfront. Thank you for this opportunity to share my comments with you. While folks' hearts are in the right place, the current feeding operation has created very negative conditions which need to be realistically addressed. The excuse of "I cannot control what happens outside my property" is not adequate. The impacts and ripple effects on the adjacent properties and nearby neighborhoods need to be assessed. These impacts would not be allowed from any other operation in the city. In the interest of neighborhood vitality and state stability, please ensure there is a plan, a defined plan, to offset these negative impacts that's clearly defined and maintainable before this aspect of the request is evaluated. Thank you for your time and kind consideration.
Thank you very much. Is that everybody?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, the next order of business, we're going to address...
I need a motion.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You're right. I need a motion on the deferred item number seven, please.
I'll make a motion to defer item number seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote is open.
By recorded vote of ten to zero, agenda item number seven has been deferred.
To clarify, as the request of the applicant, based on what they said, the item will be deferred until the October agenda meeting. So it's deferred to date certain.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, the next order of business, we're going to address those that have been placed on the consent agenda, and our vice chair will handle this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This afternoon, we have, I believe, five items on the consent agenda. The first matter on the agenda is item number one, and that is an application of the Glam Life Beauty Bar LLC and KHHR Haygood LLC as a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor at 4663 Haygood Road, Suite 207. And then that is in the Bayside District. Do we have a representative for that application? Could you come forward, please? Could you state your name for the record and then just tell us a little bit about your application?
Okay, Alicia Segler. I'm requesting a conditional use permit for permanent makeup with the microbleeding. We're not actually going to be doing body tattoos, just microbleeding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this application being consent, put on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. The chairman has asked Commissioner Dave Redman to review this for the record.
Thank you. This is an application for a conditional use permit to add a particular use, microbleating, which is also, as the applicant stated, known as permanent makeup, eyebrows, other features. That being said, it's not tattoos in the sense of an anchor on someone's shoulder. It's a very specific, it's a very specific function in an existing business, in an existing space on Haygood Road, which is operated without incident. The staff recommends approval. We are unaware of any opposition, and the commission agrees, therefore, by consent. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the consent agenda is item number two. That's an application for David and Carol Hawkins, and it is for a conditional use permit for residential kennel at 2125 Tennyson Court in the Princess Anne District. Is there the applicant available? Thank you. If you could state your name for the record and let, tell us about your application.
Sure. My name is David Hawkins. We are asking for a conditional use permit to maintain our, the six dogs we currently have until they age out, and we get down to the four dogs that are allotted by the city, and that's pretty much it. We've licensed all our dogs for years and years, and then, I guess, some records, something came up, and they said, "You've got too many."
And I understand that you're asking for the condition number two to be removed because you do have one dog.
Yes, I do. We have one female dog that is still of breeding age, and she is expected to well pups in mid-October. So I'm asking to be able to have that one removed.
Okay, thank you.
And then, once we're, once the dog hits about seven years, seven and a half years, we stop breeding, and they're just our pets.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. The chairman has asked Commissioner Steve Barnes to review this for the record.
Thank you, ma'am. The request for a conditional use permit for a residential kennel is, in the staff's opinion, acceptable. According to the animal control, there are no recent complaints registered regarding dogs on this property. However, 2010, there were a few calls in regard to excessive barking. A summons was issued, the case was resolved, there's been no complaint sent. Based on these considerations, the staff has recommended approval of this request, and we're not aware of any opposition. There are seven recommend, recommended conditions with this permit. Number two, if I recall, it's going to be changed. It says no breeding of dogs on the property. What I understand, there'd be one time of year. Is that correct? Okay. So the, we put it on the consent agenda since there's no opposition.
Right, thank you. The next matter on the consent agenda is item number four, and that's an application for SAIR Enterprises, Inc., and it is a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales at 3096 South Lynn Haven Road in the Beach District. Do we have a representative for that item? Thank you. When you get to the podium, could you state your name for the record and tell us about your application?
My name is Armon Aziz, representative of SAIR Enterprises. Our intention is to open a used automotive sale segment for our company. We already have a premise for automotive repair, gasoline sales, and a car wash system. So what we have done is that we have closed down our car wash segment, and we want to utilize that space for automotive sales.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here that has opposition of this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Okay, you can have a seat. Okay, seeing none. The commissioner has asked Commissioner George Alcaraz to read this to the record, please.
Thank you. The conditional use permit for automobile service stations was originally approved for the property in 1966, followed by modifications, excuse me, of conditions to promote a convenience store in February 2001, with service bays in August of 2003. The applicant seeks to display up to 14 automobiles for sale on the site. No exterior changes to the building are proposed. The office for the motor vehicles will be located in the former car wash bay, and as a condition of approval, staff recommends that no more than four automobiles be displayed in the parking lot along South Lynn Haven Road rather than the six depicted on the layout. With this reduction, the onsite parking requirement can be met. Staff recommends a condition for the type of motor vehicles to be displayed to be automobiles. And based on these considerations, staff finds this acceptable, and the Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right, thank you. The next item that we've placed on the consent agenda is item number five. We, we have speakers coming in?
Please give you have a speaker for number five.
All right, so we'll save that to be heard. So the next item on the consent agenda is number six. That is an application for HR Kemp's River LLC and Bonnie's Corner Associates. That is a conditional use permit for indoor recreation facilities at 1205 Fordham Drive, and that is in the Kempsville District.
Thank you, Ms. Rosinski. For the record, thank you. My name is RJ Nutter. I'm an attorney, represent the applicant. Pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me. First, thank you for putting us on the consent agenda. We appreciate that. Sanders, Mr. Weiner, appreciate all your help. It's a great application. We're happy someone's moving into this space. All the conditions are acceptable, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there anybody with opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. The commission, the chairman has asked Commissioner Dave Weiner to read this in for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Rosinski. This is a conditional use permit for indoor recreation facility at Kemp Service Shopping Center. The applicant proposes to provide indoor recreation activities for, for a 24-hour fitness facility. Zoning ordinance permits an indoor recreation facility for up to 7,500 square feet. As a matter of right, the proposed facility is going to be over 24,000 square feet, and it would need a conditional use permit will be required. Any storefront entrances proposed with signage above. We recommend approval and put this on a consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Madam Chair, that was the last item on the consent agenda. I make a motion that items one, two, with the removal of condition number two, item number four, and number six be approved.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Vote is open.
By recorded vote of ten to zero, agenda items one, two, number two with conditions as amended, four and six have been approved by consent.
Great. I'd like to thank all the applicants that had a matter on the consent agenda today for coming down and to this hearing, and they will be scheduled on the website for the next city council meeting. And so, thank you very much. The next order of business will address the remaining matters on our agenda, and if the clerk would please call the first item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item to be heard is agenda item number three, Haley Properties LLC. It's an application for a conditional use permit, automobile repair garage on property located at 1657 Laskin Road in the Beach District. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative please step to the podium?
State your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Grady Palmer. I'm an attorney. I represent Hale Properties Discount Tire. This would be the third Discount Tire location in the city, actually the fourth. There is one currently under construction at Virginia Beach Boulevard at Thalia. There are two others that are currently operating. Understand that there's some opposition to this matter. I certainly understand those concerns. You know, first, first thing I would note, you know, we understand that this location is in the strategic growth area for Hilltop. We try to balance the technical inconsistencies with architecture and landscaping, and so I think this would be a good use for this property. The property is currently vacant. It was a mattress store for, for many years. We think this would be a good investment for, for the property owners. Also, it would be on a ground lease. So that's, that's important, too, from, from a redevelopment perspective, that this property would be available for redevelopment in the future as it, as it comes in, in this direction to Hilltop. I'd also like to point out, there are a couple stipulations that staff has recommended that we agree with. We agree with all the stipulations, but I just want to highlight a few. Stipulations that would prevent outdoor storage, any outdoor storage, or any outdoor work of any kind. And for those of you that have seen or maybe visited, the current Discount Tire operation, they're very clean, they're very well-run, and they are entirely self-contained. And so, from, from that perspective, I think this would be a good use for this property. I'll stand by for any questions that you have. Certainly, if there is a need to defer this matter, we're certainly not opposed to that, but we would request that you support the application. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
We have two speakers.
Hello, Mr. Jennings. How are you?
Hi. My name is William Jennings, and I am representing, I'm employed by, 1636 Industrial Park Road LLC, 601 Nevin Road LLC. The, the, we call it the Glidden Shopping Center. It's a three brothers' partnership. And, let's see, as I said, 636 First Colonial Road as well. That properties are currently up for sale, and as you can see from the literature that's going around, it's adjacent there to the location. And then, one of the properties, 1636 Industrial Park Road, is on the backside on the corner.
Mr. Jennings, would you just take, I'm going to interrupt you, but if you, there's a pointer right there, and if you could just point to the pieces of property that you are representing, that would be great.
Okay. It actually goes off the screen there, but I'll start right here. It goes down here, all the way over here, up here, all of this, all of this. Whoops.
Put it back, Marshall. Put it back, it got changed.
Well, go ahead, and we'll, we'll, oh, there it is. Okay.
So then, let's see, I was up here, goes through here, comes over here, over here, all the way down here again. So it's almost this whole square.
That whole, all, all except for the...
Except for that place there and the gas station. These people actually rent that parking lot from us. The other property is right here, which is all this right here.
Okay.
And together, this is about all over four acres. We have in there, you'll see an altar survey, as well as this one is more than an acre. So it's a total of more than five acres. But this is up for redevelopment. And what we're hoping for, and the reason that we are trying to do it, is to get a buyer that is interested in redeveloping, and as you can see from that brochure, in the strategic growth area, because that gives the owners the highest and best value for their property. And it's a chance to redevelop that whole area, certainly that rectangle. And so, that's part of the reason that we were kind of against it. It's, it's a good area because elevation 27 is there, if you've, if you've heard of those folks. The elevation is actually 28, 27 feet there, which is the highest other than maybe Mount Trashmore in Virginia Beach. So, and the Walgreens on the corner, on the opposite corner over here by First Colonial and Laskin had a recorded sale of 12 million for that. So we would be against anything that would inhibit pedestrian traffic and would cause more traffic to be there, because that would inhibit our development concept. And we do have it listed now with a develop, with a real estate company, and farming it out both here as well as nationally.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Jennings?
So, so what's the objection to this particular use? I mean, this is like a pretty modern use, but I'm trying to understand what your concern is.
Okay. They were, they're putting the building pretty close to the roadway that's five feet. And also, the, the walkway...
Close to what?
The roadway on Nevin is five feet off that, and then on the other. And part of it was in the other handout that I had given earlier was in, was concerning pedestrian traffic, concerning vehicular traffic, and also non-compliance with the area that we're trying to make it look, the vision that the city had with the strategic growth area. So the, you know, three to five stories. If you look at that brochure, you can see, and there's a copy of the artist's concept of what they wanted to do, and that's what we're trying to market it as.
Well, pulling the building towards the road is a, is a concept that's promoted in the comprehensive plan. That's, that was all, I mean, that's, that's why it's been pulled up like it is.
Right. Yes, sir.
I'm sure the planners encourage that, and so they would encourage your property owner to do the same, I would think.
Okay. And I can respond to that?
Sure.
See the light? Oh, the issue would be that the type of businesses there is not, that's why they're asking for a conditional use permit, because it's not compliant. And that would cause a lot more of the type of vehicular traffic, including the loading and unloading of lots of tires, as we have observed at their other locations. And so, that would be kind of counterproductive with the trucks and all that we would think of, for the frequency of them, for pedestrian traffic in that area.
So would your development have any trucks bringing things in, coming and going, and delivering, and any of that?
This was, the proposed, the folks that have proposed...
I'm talking about your, your proposal.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and I'm saying the, the proposals that we've had so far are for office-type complexes, medical facilities, three to five-story type buildings to maximize the revenue from the buildings. So I, I don't know that they would have that type of vehicles coming and going there. It's more of an office-type of businesses. And so, and also, we, we didn't get notified about this, and so when we found out about it in a sales meeting with the marketing with the real estate company. And so then, we called the city, and they told us about it, and then we requested that they send us a notification, and they did. We called the owner behind them, which also we know, Mark Gilbert. He did not have, he said he didn't get notification. First, he'd heard of it yesterday, was when he talked to us. We talked to another owner, they said they hadn't heard of it. They weren't going to be here today. Neither one of them would be, because they're already, well, one of them's going to be out of town, and the other one has another commitment that's a pretty serious thing. So I was hoping that at least, you know, the area people would be able to know, adjacent property owners at least, would be able to have enough notice to be able to put things together. I really wasn't supposed to be here today to do this. That's why it's last-minute thing. Someone else was going to do that, but they couldn't show up either.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Commissioner Weiner has a question?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So your property's just been advertised now. I mean, so, it's saying that, I mean, you can't pull the rabbit out of your hat or anything, but what do you, kind of timeframe are you talking about? It could take years for years, two, three, five, six, seven, eight, 10 years for that develop, to develop? I mean...
To actually do development?
Yeah. I mean, it could take a long time, so, is your, are you saying your development won't work with this?
Yes, I'm saying that if it's non-compliant with the strategic growth area for one reason, for one thing, and because that, to get the highest and best use and maximize the value of what the concept of a, of a developer would want, we need it to be in that, that's how we're marketing it, is the strategic growth area for the vision, the concept that the city had. And so, anything that takes away from that that's adjacent to it is going to be detrimental to us, especially on pedestrian-type things and safety and, and traffic of trucks.
I understand what you're saying, but it's been... I understand what you're saying, but it's been there for such a long time, and, you know, you just don't know when yours is going to go, what happens. So this is hard, because this is, this area, I mean, this, in my opinion, would look good in this area. It's a redevelopment of the area with nothing that's been done there for a long time.
Right. We have had a number of letters of intent, and so we've been sifting through those, and we're looking for our best offer, because we've already had lots of folks, as you can imagine, because it's a pretty prime piece of property.
Sure.
And being all jointly there together. The folks that run the gas station, they're going to be, you know, they have to, their first island and their gas tanks on the ground are going to be, because of the widening of the road, going to be losing that. So, you know, they've asked, make us offer. So you could have that whole block, you know, could be potentially up.
Right. Yes. Whitney.
Yes, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Nevin Road is the entrance to the Super Walmart?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, it's one of the entrances. Yeah, there's another entrance on Donna.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and there's a traffic light there also.
And this will be a brand-new building?
This would be a brand-new development, yes, sir. So it would be redeveloping that area, which is, if you know the buildings there, all the buildings are pretty much old.
Yeah. Because I mean, think you have, if I'm not mistaken, you have the Virginia Steakhouse. It's kind of an older building. I don't think that's operating anymore. There's some older properties in there, and this is an opportunity to have a brand-new building that is not a high-traffic generator in front of the Super Walmart.
Right. So the concept, as you were just saying, is that the Virginia Steakhouse, the Haley Properties tried to locate there. We opposed that. They tried to locate, I believe, over at the restaurant that was across the street that had closed up. And I believe that Target had opposed that. And so now, they're making their, you know, we're not opposed to the business itself, of course. It's just that the location and what you're going to try to put there, if we're going to try to develop this area and try to do the vision, which I think is the highest and best use and gives us the most value for it, then we would like to see, you know, enforcing of the rules. Otherwise, they wouldn't have to have a conditional use permit to, you know, because it's not compliant.
Okay.
Yes. Commissioner Redmond?
But a conditional use permit doesn't require conformance with a strategic growth area plan, which is very broad.
Right.
Okay. We have dozens of automotive facilities operating in strategic growth areas all across the city, if not hundreds.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's not exactly unusual that this kind of facility would operate in a strategic growth area. This is someone else's piece of property. And I understand that you don't care for it, but I'm having a hard time finding anything particularly noxious about it, because from what I see, these are some of the nicest, cleanest, predominantly brick of this kind of retailer in the city. I just, I'm having a hard time finding what's objectionable about it from an objective standpoint.
Right.
You can help me with that, because I don't see it.
Okay. Well, I would like to have more time to prepare my material, because we just got notification, and we called the city, and they sent us out a notification. And we are an adjacent property owner at 636 Industrial Park Road. Some of the other owners, Mark Gilbert, that's the property, I don't see it there, but he's right to the bottom of that property. He did not have, he didn't receive notice, so he told us that. And I believe he called the city and said that he was opposed to it.
He's here.
I'm sorry?
He can speak himself.
So, maybe so.
Well, let's-
We'll hear him in a minute. We'll hear him when we're done here.
Can you tell us a little bit about the notification, and what did or didn't occur?
Right. I believe, based on the staff just pulled up, that the mainly requirement is for the immediately adjacent properties. These properties aren't immediately adjacent to the property. Now, however, they do have the signs posted, and there is a notice for the date of the meeting, which is why I believe some of the speakers are here today. So-
Except one of our properties is, 1636 Industrial Park Road. We back up to the corner of your lot, or the lot that they're saying. It's, they have a lot, it's actually two parcels, D and E, I believe, is what they're planning there. And the back part there is the E part, which is a sliver that goes that way. We're right there on the back corner, behind Mr. Gilbert's property.
I understand. There's a, it looks like there's a flag lot portion that's going behind it.
Yeah.
Right.
That is in between, technically in between the property that they're discussing and this property in question.
And they're going to use that, I believe, flag property. Is that all right? They're extending that? No? Okay. So anyway, other folks, we talked to some other folks, and they didn't get notice either, although they're not adjacent property owners. They are also business owners who expressed that they did not like the idea of it and wanted to hear more about it.
Ordinance requires-
Yes.
-that they notify folks who are immediately adjacent to the property, and that's also why they stick that orange sign on the property.
Right.
That if you're cruising down First Colonial Road, or you live in the neighborhood, that's how other folks are notified by that. So I think what I heard you to say is that you met the ordinance's requirements for notification. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Yeah, I applaud Mr. Jennings and, you know, their vision for that. I think that's right on, and I appreciate that. I mean, I think that that's, you know, a very good thing for, you know, people to see that and identify it. And you see that maybe that's not the highest and best use of that property. I do, I do think that it's acceptable use. Maybe more so in the improvements and the aesthetics of the site itself. You know, maybe just because of the landscaping, the architecture, but, I mean, in my opinion.
Do you have a question?
Absolutely. No, I don't have any questions. Sorry. Not necessarily any questions, but I mean, I do, you know, applaud your, you know, your stand on that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark Gilbert.
Good afternoon.
My name is Mark Gilbert. I own and represent the property directly behind this building. It's a strip shopping center that we just, would you like me to point it out?
Sure. That'd be great.
This building, right there, that piece of land adjacent to it. We just, last week, we completed a substantial remodeling of the property. We spent an awful lot of money, and I'm happy to report, it looks very nice.
It does look nice.
Already had three new tenants in the last week. We object to this for similar reasons, that Hilltop is a very pristine area. If any of y'all drive around there at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock in the morning, you'll see all the beautiful shopping centers are always clean, well-done. And this area, Hilltop, has been referred to by your staff and other people in the city as one of the finest shopping areas you have in the city of Virginia Beach. We've made an effort with our center to improve the looks, and to continue with that. I was one of the first tenants in Hilltop North Shopping Center to sign a lease before it came out of the ground, and I've been a merchant at Hilltop for 48 years, so I'm familiar with the area. My tenants are objecting to a number of things. Primarily, they're objecting to the noise from the air wrenches and compressors. There's nothing wrong with the tire business. When Hilltop was beginning to be developed, there were several auto repair facilities at Hilltop, and they all moved to more appropriate places as the development went along. We object, we don't feel this is, you take, we object that the city should not take one of their finest shopping areas and put a tire repair or auto repair facility in the middle of that area. This isn't on the edges. Towards Bird Neck Road, there's several tire stores. Towards London Bridge, and certainly Virginia Beach Boulevard, there's many of them. I realize they're putting a beautiful building in. It causes hardship for us, because it's taken away our line of sight. We have a one-story building that's, at the highest point, is about 32 feet tall. The building has been set up, so none of the doors or bays face the public areas, so it'll be facing the tenants next door. We get the benefit of a self-contained building. We get the dumpster location. That's primarily our objection. We don't believe that you would consider putting a tire repair facility in the middle of Pembroke, and Hilltop is certainly one of your finest areas. We don't believe a tire facility should be put there. Any questions?
Any questions?
Well, what is acceptable to you?
Well, retail. Any retail store, okay? A mattress store, which we had too many of, and they closed, did not have air compressors. I believe we'd be closing our eyes to feel that we should expect a tire facility to be pristine and neat. Unfortunately, I've heard stories when I've, the way I found out about this, I didn't want you to get the wrong impression. The city did send me a letter, but prior to a letter, one of the two signs that was put up ended up on my property. I don't believe it was up for more than two days, and certainly on Thursday before the storm, there weren't any there. But that's not an objection on my part. Okay? My objection is, it is, I don't believe an auto repair facility is a retailer, is a tenant that you put in your finest shopping area. Can you imagine one being at Pembroke? I'm not talking about Pembroke Mall, behind Pembroke Mall. I'm talking about in the new area. Hilltop's done a good job of being resilient over the past 50 years. It's been kept up. It's a beautiful area, and I believe it brings a lot of revenue to the city. That's my objection.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Palmer? I think that's our last speaker. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to come up?
So just, in closing, I'll just keep this brief. I certainly understand the objections. My opinion, and I'm biased, this is a much better, this is an improvement over what's there. Right now, the site has no landscaping, no treatment of any kind, you know, so what will be replaced, the building will be torn down. It will be set back from Nevin Road more than five feet, and that's really to allow for enhanced landscaping along Nevin Road. You know, there's two entrances on Alaskan Road, Feeder Road. Right now, one of those will be closed. So I think this will be overall a significant improvement to what's there now. I mean, certainly, if you turn us down, and council turns us down, and something will come along, but, you know, I think, all things considered, this is, this is something that is, it's certainly acceptable and appropriate, and I think a major improvement over what's there now. So I'll stand by for any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Palmer? Yes, Commissioner Weiner.
All work is going to be done inside the bays. There'll be nothing outside, correct?
Correct.
That's what I thought I read in here. Okay.
Yeah, and no outdoor storage of any kind, no work outside the building. All that is required by the conditional use permit.
I have a question, too. The last gentleman mentioned the dumpsters. Are those dumpsters enclosed? Will they be gated on the dumpsters, or they're closed and not open? Or what is planned there?
Yeah, we'll have enclosed dumpsters.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Refresh my memory. There's the one under construction at Virginia Beach Boulevard and Thalia Road. There's the one that's open and operating on Holland Road in front of the, the Super-
Kroger.
Thank you. Kroger. Where's the third?
1600 General Booth.
General Booth.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All of those are street locations.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
They're not behind something, or they're all right up on the roadway.
That's right. And they want to be up on the roadways.
And those are pretty major thoroughfares.
Yes.
Are they not?
Indeed.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to close the hearing now and open it up to discussion amongst the commissioners. Anybody have anything to say?
I do.
Yes.
I'm sort of have mixed feelings about this, and probably what's really guiding it is we've spent about all this time planning these strategic growth areas and the concept of what we think there needs to be to go there. But if we keep deviating from what we think should be there, then we'll never get there. So, because this is an item that was not envisioned for the strategic growth area, that's why I'm, I'm sort of on the fence. I've seen where their other stores are. I do believe they do a good job with their landscaping and how they look. I'm just concerned about the location and the fact that, you know, it's not, it's not within the vision of what we spent all this time and energy and, you know, blood, sweat, and tears trying to plan for it. So that's where my, that's where my concern lies.
Mr. Redmond?
I was thinking along the same lines as Jan, actually. You know, when I read this, it's not consistent with the recommended uses identified for the Hilltop SGA plan. What do we, I mean, and we keep doing this time to time, where we say, "Well, it's not quite ready yet. It's not quite ready yet." Well, and I listened to the gentleman that first spoke, that they are seeking, and I know, I think he's been here before, and I think it's taken a while, and they're working on it, and they haven't achieved what they want to with the redevelopment of those areas that he passed around the map. But it will come, I think, and sooner than later, you know, in the history of Hilltop, you can look at what has gone on on the other corners, between Hilltop North, the center where there's now the New Panera, and that, that center that's on the other corner, I guess it's in the northwest corner. You look at the fact that, and I know this isn't necessarily the end-all, be-all, but there's, you know, tire stores within a mile down on Alaskan Road, and I don't know, I think, I just, I don't see why we don't stick with the plan at this point in time. I think this is one of those stopping points where we say, "No, we're going to stick with, we're going to uphold the SGA plan and not approve users that are not identified as consistent with that plan."
Yes, Ron.
I think it is consistent. I think the, you know, I think his design criteria is met. You know, they work under the design criteria that's been set forth. And I think that the use is appropriate. It's well landscaped. You know, the other property is not developed yet. We don't know what that's going to be. So I tend to agree with this application.
I feel like Mike and Jan, but I, if something's been sitting there for such a long time, and as Ron says, it does meet the criteria of the development, the landscaping and the building itself, it looks good. It's better what's there now. And if there was something, a contract or something in the development that they're working on now is up and running or getting ready to move forward, that'd be a different story. But it could take years for that to happen. Who knows how long that could take to happen? I just feel like this is going to make the area dress it up a little bit, make it look better. So I'm intend to support it also. And I don't feel like a Discount Tire is going to hinder anything that they're going to develop in that area. So just because of the way it looks, just because of the exterior, so I'm going to tend to be there also.
Mr. Redmond?
I agree with David, and I agree with Ron. This is, this is an improvement in every respect to this property. It's an improvement in every respect. Landscape's improved, appearance of the building is improved. It's the nicest-looking tire store I've ever laid eyes on, if you look at the renderings. And it's just false to suggest that, gosh, you can't have this use up on the roadway. There's one on Holland Road, for crying out loud, it's one of the busiest thoroughfares in the city. There's one on Independence Boulevard, which I can see from my office in Town Center. So, I mean, this use, this particular brand, not just the use, is on the roadway in major thoroughfares. And there are, of course, dozens and dozens that predate strategic growth area plans. I don't understand the objection to it. Frankly, I don't see any objective reason to do it. If anything, this is the SGA plan at work, because this spot would probably would be maturing and improving absent any kind of SGA plan, because that's just what market economics do. And I think that's what's happening here. It's entirely appropriate use. It's an improvement of the property in every way. I don't see how you can deny someone a productive use of his property for what I don't, I just don't see any reason to do it. So I support it.
Mr. Redley?
I agree with Mr. Redmond, Mr. Ripley, and Mr. Weiner. This shopping center has, for years, been an under, underdeveloped shopping center. Before Super Walmart was there, it was a Kmart. You've got vacant buildings. It's always been kind of a hodgepodge of buildings that are, quite frankly, a lot of them are not that attractive. This is, this is a very attractive building. I think it's, I think it's a good use. I know the gentleman earlier mentioned, you know, about office development. You know, we haven't seen a lot of office development in Virginia Beach, and I think that you're going to probably not see a lot going forward. I think, I think most of it, you're probably going to see, you know, at the central business district at Pembroke. I, I think it's a good use. Again, I think it's a very attractive building, and given what's there today, I, I think this is, I think this is good. So I support it.
Yes, Mr. Wall.
I think it's a good, good form. I think it's going to look different than what's out there. And, you know, my example is the one that's on Holland's, and that it is, the intent is to pull it towards the street, so it is more, the buildings are more pedestrian-friendly, I believe. And it will have the, the green space up front with new parking on the front side, but just to, to, I don't know if this point was brought up, but it's going to be, if the line of the buildings are, you know, here, it's going to be out here. It's going to be in front. And, you know, that's by design, and that's by the intent of the SGA, so just, because it was kind of a, I wouldn't say shock, but I know that, you know, the discount tire in Holland's, I believe, came before, so, and it is, you know, more prominent than the line of buildings, and, you know, that's by intent and by design, but just to, just to bring that out.
I know that it's an SGA area, and, and we strive to, to hit those goals, and, and the design of it, bringing it to the curb and the landscaping does, in fact, fill those requirements. I question the use of the business only because we have a business near something similar to that, and it was supposed to have the bays closed and the doors closed, and it's not. And it, it impacts us as a neighbor. It's loud. They don't like the doors down. It gets hot in the summer, and it's not exactly the best view we have of our neighbor. And so that concerns me when I look at this, because I know the intent and the goodwill of our neighbor was not to operate in that, and our neighbor does, and we can't seem to do anything about it. And so with that, next door to that, I believe east of that is a dentist office, and next to that is a salon that's been there quite some time. And I'm not quite sure what else is there before the median breaks again, but, and that it is exposed, you know, it concerns me that that, that particular entity is exposed completely, and it doesn't really meet the SGA requirements. And, and I have to say, I commend the gentleman that has five acres that's amassed that much property, because I remember when the Virginia Steakhouse went out of business, and so there was a lot of give and take in that, in that particular area. And that's a, that's a tough area of, of the Hilltop and how it's exposed to First Colonial Road, and if they can make great improvements to that, it would be a huge improvement to that western part of west-east corner, I guess is what it is of, no, I guess it's the southeast corner of Hilltop. I'm just, and the fact that Mr. Palmer mentioned that this has sort of jumped from one area, Hilltop, to another with the same kind of opposition from all the other neighbors gives me concern that they're not as welcoming as these neighbors are either. So I'm just, I'm struggling really hard with this particular use, I have to say. Yes, Mike?
Echoing what Dee just said, I don't think it's going to be a good neighbor. I just don't think it's, the way it rolls out, it can look pretty, but it ain't going to sound pretty, and I'm against it. I think it's a wrong move to put this tire store in, and it's going to be, it's going to be noisy, and it's, it's going to, I think adversely impact other people developing around it because of that. I'm going to vote against it.
Commissioner Redmond.
I move approval of the application.
Second.
The vote is open. A recorded vote of six to four. Agenda item number three has been approved.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is agenda item five. Anthony and Kelly Lynn Spira, an application for a conditional rezoning, conditional O-2 Office District to conditional A-12 Apartment District on property located at the northern corner of Hinsdale Street across from 520 Constitution Drive, located in the Bayside District. Yes?
Madam Chair, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing Tony and Kelly Lynn Spira. The Spears are here with me this afternoon. This is kind of a very unique application. The, I know it's on consent, so I'll try to, try to be brief. The request involves a separate parcel of land that was created on the original Pembroke Park subdivision plot in nineteen sixty-nine, and the, as you all know, it's staff, staff's spot on with their evaluation and our opinion. This piece of property was owned by the folks who operated the school and the Pembroke Manor House, the Dominos, and I am personally aware of the fact that they offered to convey this property to the city on more than one occasion. City has no, had no interest in the property. The Spears, who own and live in the house that's shown on all of the plans at the east end of the, the property, they're, Kelly, Kelly Lynn's father owns two other units, the one directly adjacent and the one, one over Site Three. They live in one, the, her parents, and her sister lives in, in the other. So they, they've lived here for a long time. In fact, Tony has maintained this piece of property for, since two thousand and three, what, sixteen years. The Dominos sold the, the property where the, the school was on, the Pembroke Manor House, to some folks from out of the area. They may even be out of the country, but, and it's, it's not being maintained at all. And the Spears purchased this piece of property from, from the Dominos who operated Ivy League Academy. They just simply want to maintain it, put a very attractive, open-style wrought iron style fence around it as a yard. No trees will be removed whatsoever. There's a small playhouse, two hundred and forty square feet. It's not a garage, nor is it a shed. It's very attractive structure. You've got, it's proffered. That's all that can be done on the property. It's twelve by twenty feet. It's the height at the peak of the A-frame roof is fourteen feet. Now, it was on consent agenda, the one thing I want to point out, if you can put the plan up there, that's on page five of, there we go. And you know that the fence is all open-style fence. We showed initially, and this is going to change if I can get this to work, now the battery's dying. What we're going to do is, there we go. There, there are fences along the back of all these units.
You're just off the map.
Yeah, it's just not working.
You're off the radar.
Yeah, well, you can see over there, there's a cable TV box, and then there's also another vault that's not shown on that plan because the proposed four-foot height of wrought iron fence blocks it out. We're going to actually continue that wrought iron style fence coming all the way across seven feet, where's where the cable TV pedestal is, seven feet off the, the existing fence line, so that all of the units will have, you know, provide an easement. All of them will be able to get in and out of the back of their backyards where the fences are. This, this subdivision, nineteen sixty-nine, was not done the way they've been done since, and frankly, they stopped doing these single-family townhouse subdivisions a long, long time ago. They're all condos now. But the way they, they're typically done, the way they were done, once somebody figured out that this was not the right way to do it, is there's actually, should be an easement across the back five feet of each of those sites up there where the townhomes are, and the fencing should be five feet inside the line so everybody can get back and forth to their backyard with the lawnmower, weed whacker, whatever the case may be. But that wasn't the way this was done. And so because the Spears recognized that, that issue when it was raised by Mr. Aguilar, we are going to continue the open-style fence, but instead of going out and just tying into the, the existing wood fence, we're going to come seven feet off of the corner and come straight across so that there'll be a seven-foot strip, and it'll be visible so it's not a policing issue like having two solid fences back to back. So you'll be able to see everything, but that way each of the units will have the ability to get in and out of their, out of their backyard. And we'll change that exhibit between now and when this goes to, to city council. And with that one change, which will alleviate the issue of being able to get in and out of the back of the properties and set up a scenario that is what typically exists on the lots themselves, not on this piece of property, but because the Spears own three of the, or two that actually would be impacted by it, it makes good sense, and they're, and they're good neighbors that, you know, so they've been maintaining this property for sixteen years. They own the property. It's going to be re-subdivided, be a part of the residential lot. Nothing else can be put on it other than this little playhouse. Be happy to answer any questions.
I got one.
Yes.
Mr. Burdon, so you're going to put an easement actually on a plat to show ingress egress or something like that?
Right. What they'll do is, because it'll, it will be the benefit of their units as well, that the, it'll be, but it'll be on, on this piece of property, but it'll be ingress egress, setting up the kind of scenario that's been done and ones that were done correctly.
Cool.
Who will maintain the easement?
Well, I'm sure that, I'm sure that the Spears will maintain it because they're going to cut, they're going to be cutting the grass, and they'll, two of their, two of Kelly Lynn's parents' units will be beneficiaries of it as well. But we may set it up so that we make the people who own those units do it, but as, I'm sure as long as Kelly Lynn's parents are there, that Tony will be cutting the grass because he likes to do that. Does it, does it for a living.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Burdon? All right. Thank you. We'll get back at you.
Thank you all.
We have one speaker, Aida Shimmel.
Apparently I am here representing the Pembroke Manor Civic League. We all had questions about the orange signs when they went up.
Well, if you'll just.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm sorry, I've never spoken before.
That's quite all right. I'm going to ask you to drop your mic a little bit so we can hear you, and then, oh, raise it up. There you go. And then just state your name for the record, please.
Aida Shimmel.
Okay, Ms. Shimmel, if you'll just go ahead and tell us what your thoughts are.
So we all saw the signs go up, and a number of people did go and, you know, look at the signs, and there was a lot of questions about it at first. I think a lot of people did not know that it was private property and had already been sold. A lot of us have been there a long time. We knew the Dominos, we knew the Ivy League Academy, which is what the Manor House was for many years, twenty years, possibly more. So nobody wants to infringe on somebody's right to do what they want with their own property. But some people were concerned that it was going to be a parking lot, so now we know what it's going to be. But I looked over all the paperwork here, and so I had some questions, and then I can pass this on to the next Civic League meeting. If the Spears sell the property, their, their property, does, is that adjacent property going to continuously go with the townhome? Or could it be sold individually, and then something else be put on it?
We can get Mr. Burdon to answer that question for you.
Okay.
Or staff can answer it.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
Ma'am, the, one of the proffers that were offered by the applicant were that it would be combined with the lot of that one townhouse, so it would have to go together in perpetuity.
In perpetuity, okay. And is there, are they going to open up the street again on Hinsdale so that it opens up onto Constitution? That's not part of the plan.
That's a city question. We have no plans to open Hinsdale on the Constitution. But what they are doing is they are, as you can see on this plan right here, part of Hinsdale Street where it turns into a court, it's actually on the private property. The applicant is actually going to dedicate right-of-way to the city to put that into the city's right-of-way. So that's, that's where that comes from, and we're not planning on opening at this time, that I'm aware of, anything towards Constitution.
Okay, I think that's something that the Civic League would be happy about because the Dominos actually paid to have that closed off so that there wouldn't be so much traffic going past their school. And the trees are going to stay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, I mean, the, the, the design of it looks very pretty. I think a lot of people were thinking that that was a property that went with the Manor House, and it's almost like a little park, a little green area with it. Most of us that live there, we really liked that Manor House. It adds quite a lot of ambiance to the community. I'm, it was up for sale. It did get bought by somebody out of town, but then they reneged on the sale or whatever, and it has been up for sale for a while. I think a lot of us in the neighborhood wish we could buy it, but I wish the Historic Society would take it back over again. I think it becomes more valuable historically as time goes on and more is built up around the Pembroke area. But a lot, we love that area. We love our community back there, that, living in the shadow of the Manor House, and it's like, oh, no, are they going to start developing stuff out here? So there was, there's just concern. There's not that it's disapproval. There was just a concern. So thank you for allaying my concerns, and now I can pass it on to the.
You're welcome.
Meeting. Thank you.
Well, thank you for taking the time to come down here.
Okay.
Mr. Burdon, you're good? All right. I'll close this hearing and open it up to the commissioners for any discussion. Commissioner Redmond.
I move approval of agenda item number five.
Second. The vote is open.
Do we have that? It's a short.
Oh, yeah. Is that more? No, I think that's part of it. I recorded vote of ten to zero. Agenda item number five has been approved.
For the record for that, also to denote Mr. Burdon's offer to amend the proffer exhibit, so just to, to include the easement as well.
Yes.
Your motion included that we will, we will amend the exhibit to show the.
To show the easement. Great, thank you very much. Is there any further business? If none, on behalf of my fellow commissioners, I'd like to thank everyone for attending today, and thank the planning director and his staff for their excellent work in preparing today's agenda, and our meeting is adjourned.